Public Meetings Act, the board secretary is forwarded notice of this meeting for advertising by having the date time and place thereof posted in the Secaucus Town Hall on the bulletin board of the education administration building as well as notice being provided to the Bergen Record Jersey Journal and district website.
Roll call.
Mr. Bartletta.
Present.
Mr. Bolonino.
Present.
Ms. Diadetta.
Present.
Mr. Barry.
Here.
Mr. Diambray.
Here.
Dr. Farinola.
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Present.
Ms. Howard.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Present.
Public forum. Full government.
Second.
Well, yeah, oh Christine, I need to read that resolution, sorry.
Approval to appoint Charlie Voorhees as the acting superin- oh. Approval to appoint Charlie Voorhees as the acting superintendent of schools for the Secaucus School District effective on April eighteenth two thousand twenty four and expiring in accordance with the terms of the employment agreement between the board and Charles Voorhees on or about June thirtieth twenty twenty four.
Second.
Call the roll. Discussion, sorry. Discussion.
Mr. Bartletta.
Prestine.
Mr. Bolonino.
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta.
Yes.
Mr. Barry.
Yes.
Mr. Diambray.
Yes.
Dr. Farinola.
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Ms. Howard.
Recusing.
And Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Grace, I have to switch mine to recusing as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bartletta.
Motion to go into exec session?
Motion.
Second.
And we went into exec session, so we are reopening our public meeting. We appointed an acting superintendent. In that time and we would like to begin again starting with the flag salute.
Let's go.
Role call.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Question. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Question. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Question. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Question. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Question. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Question. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Question. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Question. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Question. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees. Who was earlier appointed as our acting superintendent. The board would like to express our gratitude. On his acceptance of this position to step in at a time that was difficult for the district. So thank you, Charlie, and welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023 and December 14th, 2023. Second.
Question. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Deombrae?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Before we begin, I would just like to take a moment. The board would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Voorhees.
Our staff member, please excuse my allergies, it's just how I sound all of April. Our staff member of the month is first-grade teacher turned reading specialist extraordinaire Lori Valente. There are so many wonderful things about Lori. She's the epitome of a team player. She celebrates others' victories as if they are her own. She's warm and kind and smart and hardworking. What I love most about Lori is that she always tries to make things better than how she found them. If your mood is down, it will be better after talking to Lori. If Ms. Lot is running an assembly about literacy night, then Lori will level up and emerge on stage dressed as one of the main characters just so our students can meet Dawn the Fox. And when she became Claridan's reading specialist, she saw a need not just to help our struggling readers, but all our students have the best language arts experience possible. She researched programs and traveled around the state visiting schools to find us the incredible Amplify Core Knowledge Language Arts Program. And what she found has been a godsend for our students, families, and teachers. What a wonderfully rich experience the Amplify Reading Program has been. And she has done such an amazing job with it that even the company took notice and asked her this Tuesday to be a guest speaker on a panel discussion at one of their events, which we're very proud of her for doing. Lori, what you bring to the table as both a person and an educator is an intangible infectious energy that inspires everyone to want to make things better too. You, as much as the program, are why things work here. And our students are not just learning, they are thriving. I appreciate you very much. Congratulations. And it doesn't always happen like this, but I think I get to present the student version of Mrs. Valente, even though I don't think you ever got to have her as a teacher. But you two are just like her. Amelia Herrera. Tonight I have the privilege of speaking about such a remarkable young woman. Upon hearing that Amelia Herrera had been chosen as our Student of the Month, I was immediately contacted by countless staff members celebrating the choice and singing her praises, and frankly saying, "Why did it take you so long?" I believe that a kind and empathetic student is not just someone who offers a smile and a helping hand. It is someone who possesses a rare gift, the ability to see beyond the surface and connect with others on a deeper level. Amelia is exactly that. She is a unique soul whose kindness and empathy is evident in everything she does. She listens with genuine interest, offers support without judgment, and uplifts those around her with her unwavering positivity. When Amelia asks you, "How are you?", Amelia truly wants to know the answer and to do everything in her power to make your day better if she can. I mean, I can tell you that not many students check in on the principal, but Amelia does. And I feel special each time you do it. She is a great student and athlete, a talented member of our drama club, and always the first to offer her help in the lunchroom. You are clutch there. Amelia, thank you for being a role model to so many and a shining light, not just in the eyes of your fourth-grade classmates and teachers, but for all of Claridan School who are lucky enough to know you. Congratulations.
This month, I also have the privilege of honoring our April Staff Member of the Month, Mr. Don Somerset. Mr. Somerset exemplifies the spirit of teamwork, dedication, and compassion that makes our school community thrive. Mr. Somerset is someone who is always willing to lend a helping hand, whether it's guiding a struggling student or collaborating with colleagues on a project. Mr. Somerset consistently demonstrates a commitment to the well-being and success of our school. Students know that they could rely on him for guidance and encouragement. And colleagues appreciate his willingness to step in and assist even during busy times. Beyond his professional duties, Mr. Somerset brings a positive attitude to our school. He knows, we please know that your dedication, excuse me, kindness and support do not go unnoticed. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Somerset on being named the April Staff Member of the Month. Congratulations. It is with great pleasure to recognize our April Student of the Month, Melanie Wang. Melanie is someone who embodies the spirit of kindness, positivity, and warmth. Her infectious smile has the remarkable ability to brighten the day of anyone that she encounters. Melanie's genuine enthusiasm and cheerful demeanor creates a welcoming and uplifting atmosphere wherever she goes. Whether it's a simple greeting in the hallway or a kind gesture to appear, Melanie consistently demonstrates compassion and empathy. Today, we celebrate the positive qualities that make an impact on those around us. And she is a reminder of the importance of kindness, optimism, and the power of a sincere smile. Please join me in congratulating Melanie for this well-deserved recognition.
Good evening, everyone. The Secaucus High School Teacher of the Month is Tammy Hennessy. I had the pleasure of working with Ms. Hennessy for close to twenty years, so I've seen firsthand her passion and dedication to the Special Education Department. In addition to being a highly effective special education teacher within our school community, she is also the high school transition coordinator, where her role includes developing community partnerships to ensure that our students are equipped with the skills and resources necessary to thrive beyond the classroom. Her impact extends beyond academic achievement. She instills confidence, fosters resilience, and empowers her students to reach their full potential. Thank you, Mrs. Hennessy, for your tireless advocacy, your passion, and relentless dedication to shaping a bright future for our students. And the High School Student of the Month is Olivia Natividad. Maybe I saw you sneak in late, but there was a good reason you were at. No, it's okay. Where were you tonight? You were the volleyball, boys volleyball manager, right? That's on top of the many different things you do, so I'll go through that list with everyone. Olivia is a sophomore. She is an academically high-achieving student who is involved in so many different school activities. Most recently, she was the lead, one of the lead performers in the high school musical, Addams Family, playing Wednesday Addams. If anyone was there, we saw the tremendous role that she did, and she has an amazing voice. In addition to that, Olivia is a member of our cultural diversity club, Select Chorus, Sail, and Consumer Bowl. She is the second vice president for her sophomore class slate, treasurer of the Junior State of America, and junior editor of the high school yearbook. She is also a member, a valued member of the girls' volleyball team, member of the boys' volleyball team manager, and a member of our art club. Outside of school, Olivia spends time volunteering at the homeless shelter, volunteering at the medical bank, and assists other students as a peer tutor. Olivia, thank you so much for all you do for our students.
Congratulations to everyone. Student representative?
Good evening, everyone. I hope you've all been well since our last meeting. Last night at the high school, we had a senior prom meeting for both parents and students that informed them on the do's and don'ts for their child's safety for their upcoming magical night. The senior prom will take place on Thursday, June sixth, at the Venetian, and students could not be more excited. Our spring sports have been running very smoothly and nicely with students being excited to participate and watch their fellow classmates in all their extracurriculars. Our Foreign Language Arts Society held their annual spring luncheon today, which was filled with students bringing in different foods from their cultures and feasting. On top of that, our Italian three and four students will be taking a field trip to Italy tomorrow to learn about the Italian history and learn about Italian cooking at the end. And that's all, so thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Paige. Ethics training?
Good evening, and please, I apologize for my back to the audience. Sure. Sure, no problem. Of course.
Sorry for the delay. Stephen?
So, good evening, and somehow I've managed to clear the entire auditorium before we've even started. So, this is not the most exciting presentation that you will ever receive here, but it is one that is nevertheless required of you, and you're required to do this at least on an annual basis. So, I'm going to walk you through your role, the code of ethics, free speech, and when a recusal is necessary because of a conflict or because of some special interest. So, I want to begin with your role. Essentially, your role as board member is once you take your oath is governed by statute, and you are the policymakers. You are here to enforce the rules of the State Board of Education, to perform all acts and things consistent with law, to conduct the business of the school district, to ensure that the district, that the schools are well-run, to provide the necessary financial resources for equipment maintenance of the school district, essentially to make policy for the governance and the management of our schools. So as part of that responsibility, that statutory responsibility and that oath that you take after you're elected to the board, you do a number of things. You approve the curriculum that meets the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. You adopt a budget. You're in the process of doing that now. The budget, of course, provides for thorough and efficient education. It enables you to do all of those things that you are statutorily required to do to carry out the mission of the school district. You hire necessary certified personnel, as recommended by the Acting Superintendent. You develop policies for the management of the school district. Keep in mind that you don't do any of this unilaterally. You do all of this based on the recommendation of your Superintendent of Schools. So you can only take official action at a public meeting. And what that means is that the board only functions when we are here, in public, in session with a quorum of the board, which means at least five board members. We have to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, and that is the law that says that our business must be conducted in the public. Cannot be conducted in executive session. It cannot be conducted external to a board meeting. What I mean by that is that we cannot conduct the board's business through text messages or emails or through communications that take place in real time by board members outside of a board meeting. The exception, of course, is committee meetings. It's less than a quorum. There's no official action taken. The Open Public Meetings Act does not apply to our committee meetings, and so the committee meetings also recommend what the board votes on. They do not take any official action during your standing committee meetings. Again, I want you to be mindful that there have been any number of cases that have come before the courts in the last several years where emails or text messages were found to constitute a meeting in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. So when would that happen? You know, let's say, for example, tonight, that you were going to appoint Mr. Voorhees as the Acting Superintendent. And if before this evening, there were text messages or emails by at least five board members relative to whether or not you were going to approve or support that recommendation, that would be a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. You want to be careful of that also, because your text messages, your emails, your communications may be subject to access under the Open Public Records Act, because they are government records, which doesn't mean that somebody can go on a fishing expedition in terms of your private cell phones. But it does mean, for example, that if you're here at a board meeting, and if somebody in the public sees you using your cellphone for text messages, arguably, they can make an Oprah request to make sure that, you know, you weren't checking on your kids, you weren't making sure that the dog... That somebody walked the dog, you weren't making sure that a sick... That a family member was getting appropriate care, none of which would be accessible, because that's not a government record. But if those text messages were from one board member to another about something that was on the agenda for this evening, that arguably would be a government record that would be subject to access and could very well run afoul of the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. So you can only take official action at a public board meeting. The board functions when it's in session. We have a quorum meeting, and... We did this, so... "The board's direct responsibilities are to make policies, develop plans, evaluate outcomes, not manage the day-to-day operation of the schools." It is often said that it is your responsibility to make sure the schools are well-run, not to run them. So you're not to administer the schools. No board member by virtue of your office can exercise any administrative responsibility with regard to the schools. You cannot issue an individual command to the services of a school employee. You cannot, as an individual board member, direct the Acting Superintendent to do anything. You can't direct the business administrator to do anything. You can't call the principal of one of our schools because you are concerned about something that has happened in those schools and direct the principal to take some action as a result of your communication. And why? Because that would be administering the schools. So you do not have access to the district schools. You don't have any greater authority as a board member than any other visitor to our schools. And so what that means is that you cannot simply walk into one of the schools as a board member unless you're there for an appropriate purpose. You need to sign in. You need to go through the entire visitors' procedure or protocols in order to have access to our schools. Keep in mind that you have a board policy, and that policy explains that board members visiting the schools for any reason has to observe the district's regulations for all school visitors, just as I do. If I come here, go into one of your schools, I have to sign in. I have to give my identification. No special privileges are afforded to me. No special privileges are afforded to board members either. We delegate certain responsibilities as a board. You delegate to the Acting Superintendent the ability to administer the district, to keep the board informed of happenings, to make operational recommendations. And, of course, the keys to the kingdom, you hand them over to the Business Administrator. She oversees the business and maintenance, prepares the budget, establishes and maintains fiscal plans, makes sure that the wheels on the bus are always turning in the right direction. The board and the administration are intended to be cooperative and not adversarial. Members should share their concerns with administration in advance of our meetings to ensure an effective public response. So what I mean by that is, if the agenda goes out and you have concerns or questions, those concerns or questions should be presented to the Superintendent and the Business Administrator in advance of the meeting so that they can get you the information that you need to make an informed decision. The purpose of this... Yes, you know, of course, we don't want to embarrass our administrators by not being able to provide you with the information that you need, but I think that the overarching reason for this is not that so much, but so that you can make an informed decision. You ask that question at a public board meeting. If the Superintendent or the Business Administrator do not have that information to provide to you, then you're left unable, perhaps, to make an informed decision. So also the issue of complaints. Board members cannot act upon complaints, and this is a really difficult area for us, because you know that you are always a board member. So whether you're on the soccer field, or you're at a local grocery store, or you're traveling through Secaucus for some other purpose, and somebody stops you, and they have a complaint. They're concerned about a teacher. They're concerned about... They're concerned about the food in the lunchroom. They're concerned about something that has happened on one of our athletic fields. You cannot act upon that complaint. You must refer that complaint to the Superintendent, and the Superintendent has to be given an opportunity to address that complaint with an administrative solution. So even here, let's assume that we had an audience here with a legitimate complaint for the board, and they were ready to storm the Bastille with that complaint. However compelling that may be, we as a board cannot act on that complaint until it's referred to the Acting Superintendent for a resolution. Only after that happens, if you're not satisfied with that resolution, can the board act at a public meeting to address the complaint. So the Code of Ethics specifically requires board members to support all district staff, including the administration. So you can see here that the School Ethics Act is comprised of a Code of Ethics. The Code of Ethics deals with... The Code of Ethics contains your ethical responsibilities. There's also a provision dealing with prohibited acts, and I'm going to talk about the difference in just a moment. In any event, the command that you support and protect your school personnel in the proper performance of their duties would be violated or would occur if there was evidence that a board member took deliberate action that resulted in undermining, opposing, compromising, or harming school personnel. So if there was, in fact, a robust discussion here tonight, the Acting Superintendent took a position, perhaps there were board members that didn't agree with that recommendation, the board would act on that recommendation, reach a result. If board members were to go out in public and to be critical of the Acting Superintendent, that would be a violation of this provision of the Code of Ethics. Doesn't mean that board members can't disagree with recommendations made by the Superintendent, but what it means is that those disagreements, that robust discussion, should occur here or in executive session, if that's the appropriate place for that discussion to take place. Criticizing the Superintendent could lead to a violation of the Code of Ethics, where it undermines or compromises his ability to do his job in terms of the running of our school district. So the board is an entity. The board is a unit, not a collection of individuals. We share opinions, but the... Once the board elects a single course of action by a majority vote of the board, the die is cast. The discussion is over. The board members... Our board members must support the decision that has been made by a majority of the board. In open meetings, to preserve decorum and to ensure that the board expresses a single, consistent position, the president alone speaks on behalf of the board. The president may ask other board members to address issues, because they are on committees, and perhaps they have a greater knowledge than the board president in responding to a question or to a member of the public. But keep in mind that it is the board president that ultimately makes that decision. The powers of the board and the authority of the board member are not coextensive, so a board member cannot, by virtue of her office, exercise any administrative responsibility with respect to the operation of the school district. Board members on their own have no supervisory authority. And what I mean by that is this: If you walk out of this PAC Center tonight and into one of the restrooms, and you're not happy with the condition of that restroom, you could not direct a custodian, even assuming that that custodian was within arm's length, you could not direct that custodian to go in and to clean and sanitize that restroom. That complaint would have to go to the Superintendent or the Business Administrator. You could not exercise any supervisory authority over that individual. Confidentiality. So we have an obligation to preserve the confidentiality of information, and the information that comes to you is often very sensitive, highly confidential. It concerns our staff members. It concerns students and families. And so there is information that comes to you in executive session that cannot be disclosed to any third party, under any circumstances. So it is particularly important as concerns personnel matters, because beyond the confidentiality issue, there is also the potential for liability for the board, if it is an invasion of privacy. And so particularly when it comes to student issues, student confidentiality is sacrosanct. It is protected by New Jersey law. It is protected by federal law. The Family Education Rights Privacy Act, FERPA, which is identified up there. And so we want to be very careful that what we discuss in executive session is never communicated out of executive session. The other area that's subject to that exception, confidentiality, would be negotiations. Code of Ethics. So the Code of Ethics is a legislative enactment, the purpose of which is to ensure that we don't violate the public trust, and more importantly, that we don't give a justifiable impression among the public that the public trust is being violated. And there are two provisions of the School Ethics Act. The first deals with prohibited acts, and the other deals with the Code of Ethics for school board members. And prohibited acts essentially deals with a board member who uses his or her position to gain an unwarranted financial advantage for himself, or herself, or for others, where there is some financial benefit as a result of the conduct that the board member has undertaken. The Code of Ethics essentially deals with the way that we must conduct ourselves as board members. The important distinction between the two is this: If a complaint is filed against a board member with the School Ethics Commission, and if it alleges a violation of prohibited acts, then it is prosecuted by the Attorney General. It is not prosecuted by the individual who makes the complaint. And so once there's been a finding of probable cause, then the Attorney General would prosecute the board member, and the Attorney General represents the School Ethics Commission in that proceeding. If it is an alleged violation of the Code of Ethics for school board members, that must be prosecuted by the individual who has filed the complaint. Keep in mind, anyone can file a complaint against a board member, except for the board itself. You as a board cannot file an ethics complaint against one of your members. If you were going to file a complaint against one of your members, you would need to step back and file that complaint as an individual. So if there is a violation, any member of the... As I said, any member of the public can file a complaint with the commission. The commission... The School Ethics Commission has the power to recommend that the commissioner reprimand, censure, suspend, or in the worst case, remove a board member who violated the code. We have policy... We have board policies in effect, which essentially mirror everything that I'm discussing with you tonight, kind of the Belt and Suspenders. So even though the Code of Ethics stands independent, we have board policies that essentially mirror all of those provisions. So let's talk about identification. If a board member is accused of violating the Code of Ethics, even if a board member is accused of having committed a prohibited act, we have insurance which provides for identification for board members who are acting in the course and scope of their elected office, even if you are accused of some misconduct or wrongdoing. The one exception would be where it is determined that what you have been accused of is outside of your elected public duties. So you can see this case recently that involved a board member in the Norwood Board of Education, where it was determined that the allegation against her was because she was a trustee of a foundation that represented parents and families, advocated for children with special needs, and the allegation was that she was advocating for parents and families in the district in which she was an elected board member. And so the issue was, when that complaint was filed, was she entitled to identification? The determination in that case by the Administrative Law Judge and the Commissioner of Education was that it was private action that fell outside of her elected duties, and she was not entitled to identification, which meant that she was not entitled to legal representation or to recover her attorney's fees, regardless of the outcome. So these are the separate provisions of the Code of Ethics. I'm not going to go through all of these, because I have highlighted those that are the most... That are not only the most, I think, prominent, but also the areas where board members find themselves getting into the greatest difficulty. But suffice it to say that all of these provisions comprise the Code of Ethics. And you can see, we've talked about confidentiality. You are also taking an oath not to surrender your independent judgment to special interest groups. You're also taking an oath to vote and appoint the best qualified personnel after consideration of the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools. Doesn't mean you need to... That you're required to rubber stamp those recommendations. If you're not satisfied with a recommendation by the Acting Superintendent, you can send him back to the well for another candidate, but you cannot leapfrog over him and bring that candidate forward yourself. The only time that the board can actually trump the recommendation of the Superintendent is with regard to the non-renewal decision of a non-tenured employee. On May 15th of every year, the Superintendent makes a decision as to whether or not employees will be renewed for the subsequent school year. And once that decision is made on May 15th, it is a final decision. If the employee appeals that decision to the board, the board has the ability, in that case only, to trump the Superintendent's recommendation and to appoint that individual for a subsequent contract. The idea there is that originally, when that employee was recommended for a contract in the district, that employee had the recommendation of the Superintendent. The limits of the board imposed by the Code of Ethics are most clearly seen with regard to their limited involvement in personnel decisions. The board member's role in hiring is to vote and appoint the best qualified personnel after consideration of the Superintendent's recommendation. You cannot withhold your approval for arbitrary or capricious reasons. You could not refuse to vote for the appointment of an employee because you were philosophically opposed to tenure, for example. That would not be a basis to withhold your vote. And you should generally, as a best practice, limit your involvement in hiring to hiring the Superintendent of Schools and to the school business administrator, obviously. But I want to also emphasize, there is no per se prohibition against the board being involved in the interview process, provided the Superintendent agrees with that involvement. It's limited to no more than two board members, and in that process, board members cannot be interactive. You can simply view the interview process. Generally speaking, that has not happened here, because if there's one thing that I have learned about board members, they have a very difficult time at sitting at an interview and not expressing an opinion with regard to what is taking place. So generally speaking, unless it is the Acting Superintendent, the Business Administrator, perhaps a principal, the board would not involve itself in the interview process. So again, what would be examples of a violation of the Code of Ethics? Giving a direct order to school personnel, becoming directly involved in activities or functions, getting involved in the day-to-day administration of the schools, taking deliberate action that results in undermining or opposing, compromising school personnel, acting or attempting to resolve a complaint. And again, highlighting those areas that I think are most critical to bring to your attention tonight. So in addition to adjudicating complaints... So in addition to adjudicating complaints, the School Ethics Commission also issues advisory opinions, and they're actually pretty good about doing this. So if you get your request into them by the tenth day of the month, they will generally get an advisory opinion out to you by the following month. An advisory opinion is just that, not a matter of law, but if you're, you as a board member are concerned about what you can or cannot do, you want to make sure that you stay on the right side of this, that you're not violating the Code of Ethics, and you want to get some advice from the School Ethics Commission, you have the ability to do that. So you can see that in this advisory opinion, the School Ethics Commission was called upon by board members because they wanted to engage in exit interviews of staff members. They were concerned about the number of employees that were leaving the district, their inability to uh recruit and to recreate, uh, retain the most qualified personnel. They wanted to sit in on exit interviews when employees were resigning from the district. They wanted to know if they could do that without violating the provision of the code that says that you will not administer the schools and that you will not get involved in the day-to-day operation of the schools. The advisory opinion was you could not be involved in that process. That the superintendent could conduct those exit interviews, bring back the data and information to you, but you as board members could not be involved in that process. So as I've said to you, you can be involved in the interview process, again, with the superintendent's concurrence, limiting it to no more than two board members and generally not being involved interactively in the process. Another advisory opinion uh uh that, that indicated that you cannot volunteer for a school theatrical production, production by assisting with casting rehearsals and lighting, that would violate the Code of Ethics because you would be involved in supervising staff, students, personnel. You would be engaging in responsibilities that are, that are in the exclusive domain of school personnel. You cannot volunteer to be the leader of a school club that meets on school grounds. Uh, you cannot be in a position of oversight and authority over students. You can volunteer by merely constructing sets for school musicals, plays, with limited interaction with students and staff. You can serve as a trustee of a local educational foundation, subject to recusal. And you'll be happy to know you can work the chains as a volunteer on the, on the high school football games, athletic fields, all of which is passive. So in terms of notable decisions, a couple of things I want to bring to your attention. Uh, this case out of uh Angler at Cliffs, this is a board member uh who was censured when she participated in discussions in executive session on four different occasions involving a, a matter uh that involved her child, these were HIB appeals. Uh, the board president felt that she could sit in on the executive hearings as long as she didn't vote on the decision. Uh, she was wrong. Uh, you cannot be, uh, participate in executive session if you must recuse yourself from voting on the matter. It's an all or nothing proposition. Uh, in the Tejan case, you see there that a board member was reprimanding, reprimanded for using her board email to plan a unity walk. Sounds like a great idea, right? That you're going to have a unity walk, you're going to bring everybody together. The problem is that the board member never cleared that with the board, never cleared that with the superintendent. And uh she sent out all of the information, said it was district sponsored. Everybody showed up for the unity walk, nobody knew about it. Clearly, that was unilateral action that had the potential to compromise the board. How would it compromise the board if somebody was injured, may not have been an insur- insurable injury? Obviously, no matter how laudatory the purpose, board members cannot take it upon themselves to do any of these things unless it has been approved by a majority of the board. So in this case, in this uh Boyle case, you see that a board member was censured for violating the Code of Ethics when she made accusations against the superintendent, that she was acting disingenuously and that the superintendent changed the time of gr- of graduation for personnel reasons, on and on. All of this was a lot of, of vitriol uh toward the superintendent. Ultimately, it was found uh that she had not uh supported uh the administration, uh had violated confidence, uh uh clearly resulting in a violation and a censure. Um, and you can see in that Tarver case with regard to confidentiality, this was a, a, a case in which uh the NFL uh wanted to uh use the district's facilities uh in, in, in order to uh actually, in, in order to actually put on a cable uh uh documentary involving the NFL. Uh, that, all of that discussion took place in executive session because it dealt with contract negotiations. The board member was so excited about the NFL coming that he went out of executive session and told everybody about it. The contract went bust, the NFL never got to that school district, and that board member suffered a, a public reprimand as a result of violating confidentiality. Superintendent of Middlesex County School District violated two school ethics rules when she approved a list of substitute teachers that included her son. She argued that she didn't know that her son was even on the list of substitutes because the substitute list was so long uh and uh ultimately uh uh said no one brought it to her attention. And you can see here that the School Ethics Commission is pretty unforgiving when it comes to these issues, which is why you know that there are issues that come before the board and we hear board members from time to time, you heard it tonight, where board members recuse themselves. And several board members tonight recuse themselves on the appointment of our acting superintendent uh because they have family members who are employed in the district. Uh, you have heard Dr. Farinola recuse herself at nearly every board meeting uh because there are students who are placed in, uh, at the private school where she is uh the chief school administrator. And so you hear those recusals from time to time. And in this case, the superintendent should have recused, should not have recommended those individuals first off. And the fact that she, that the fact that she recommended them for appointment and the board approved them uh resulted in a violation. And so the other case that I want to bring you, that I want to bring to your attention because it's all brand new, um, and some legalese here, so I'm going to apologize for that in advance. But this is a case that came to us as, out, out of Jersey City. Uh, this was a case in which uh uh the board and several board members were sued in a federal lawsuit. Um, and the lawsuit was settled. And as often happens, there's a settlement agreement as a result of uh the settlement of that lawsuit. Uh, the board members who were sued individually had to sign off on that settlement agreement. Uh, they asked their board attorney whether or not they could vote on the settlement that was being approved by the board. The board attorney said that they could and they voted. And no sooner was the ink dry on those agreements. Uh, there were uh ethics complaints filed against those board members and the argument was that they needed to recuse themselves because that lawsuit had named them individually. Their defense was, the attorney made us do it. And that was the first time that that defense has been raised. In a school ethics case, the School Ethics Commission rejected it because, as I said, they're pretty unforgiving. The commissioner rejected it, it went up to the appellate division and the appellate division said, not so fast. You know, we think that when board members say to their board attorney at a public meeting, can I vote on this? And the board attorney says, yes, you can vote on this, that that is a legitimate defense to a charge or to an allegation that you have committed an ethics violation. Uh, although uh certainly there are a number, number of things uh that need, uh, that need to be established in order for you to successfully assert that defense. They are listed there. Uh, it has to be, the advice has to be received prior to the action being taken. The individual who offered the advice or approval, uh, uh, the individual who offered the advice or approval relied upon, possessed the authority uh uh with regard to the ethical issues. So suffice it to say that if I was, if I was to give you advice with regard to whether you vote, could vote on something at a board meeting and ultimately a complaint was filed against you, you, you could legitimately assert that as a defense. But here's the caveat to that. Uh, the School Ethics Commission could find that it was a violation of this, of, of the Code of Ethics, technically speaking, but there could not be any penalty or reprimand to you if you properly asserted that defense. Free speech? So you do not, uh, once you are sworn in as board members, uh, you do not give up your First Amendment right to speak on public issues or board issues. Uh, but there are uh uh significant restrictions that are imposed upon you. And so if you are going to speak about uh uh public issues, uh, uh, if you're going to issue a statement to the press, uh, if you are going to uh uh uh, if you're going to go uh in front of another forum and speak oven about board mis- business, you have an obligation to self-identify. And so by that, when I say that you have to self-identify, I have to say that my name is Lance Bartletta. I am a member of the Seacockus Board of Education and what I'm about to say is my own personal opinion. It has not been authorized by the Board of Education, so you must self-identify. So in terms of free speech in the act, the other thing that I want to emphasize here is that, is that unless what you have said constitutes a violation of the Code of Ethics, generally speaking, the School Ethics Commission is not going to exercise jurisdiction over it. The School Ethics Commission has said time and again, we are not the civility police. It is up to local boards of education uh to, to police themselves with regard to how they treat each other, how they treat the public, how they treat their employees, and how they treat the administration. Um, so you can see here, and this is probably the most extreme example that I could give you. Uh, this is a board member uh uh who made controversial and inflammatory statements, uh, calling the governor a tyr- a, a tyrannical POS, encouraged teachers to leave the NJEA, memes about unmasking in schools, calling discussions about gender identity a sick war on children, without disclaimers, were found not to have violated the Code of Ethics because as offensive and outrageous as all of those comments were on social media, they did not violate the Code of Ethics for board members. They violated the Code of Civility, and again, that's up to you to police yourselves. So um in terms of complying with the School Ethics Act with regard to even so, even, even where you do self-identify, you, you make it clear that you are expressing a, a, a private opinion and not an opinion that's been, been authorized by the board. You need to make sure that what you say is truthful and accurate. You need to make sure it doesn't violate confidentiality and you need to make sure that you're not undermining uh the district's personnel. Because even though you have the freedom to speak, if what you say violates any of those provisions, then this is not a matter of civility, but rather a violation of the Code of Ethics. So you as a board have done exactly that, and I commend you for it because you are among a minority of board members that have actually enac- enacted a Code of Civility in terms of how you will judge one another. And so you can see that you have policy zero one six nine oh two uh that deals with board members' use of so- social networks, the judgment that must be exercised. You have taken the initiative to police yourselves, and so what that means is that if a board member were uh to transgress any of these provisions, you would have the ability to call him or her to task as a board. So those are your social media guidelines, it's all included in your policy, conflicts of interest. So with regard to negotiations, I'm giving this to you kind of as a desk reference. If you have relatives in the district and uh you're not sure of how you can be, what, of your involvement in negotiations, you can see that you have here um when a board member must recuse himself or herself. And you are finished with me for this year. Any questions?
I have a question, Stephen. So earlier in the presentation, you discussed putting anything, just bear with me, um, in an email, on an email chain. I just want to make sure, if something was put on an email chain as the president to the other board members for informational purposes and I put a disclaimer at the bottom of the email where I was just giving information and not looking for an answer back, is that permissible?
Yes, it's not a violation. Um, when I, when I, when I was speaking about um uh email, uh email exchanges and the potential for that violating the Open Public Meetings Act, it would be where we are emailing uh simultaneously with one another, contemporaneously with one another. Uh, you are emailing uh four other board members and they're responding to you, that would be the violation. But you as the president or any board member sends out an email uh saying, you know, I, I, uh, you know, please make sure this is on the agenda. You send out an email indicating there's going to be an ethics presentation tonight. If you have any questions, bring them with you, that is not a violation.
Okay, as long as there's no response back.
Yes, and when you send that email, you should, you should indicate that you do not want to reply.
Everybody.
Yes.
Okay.
Kelly, a good solution for that too could be to utilize BCC. This way, in the event that people accidentally hit reply all just out of, you know, sheer nature or forced habit, uh, they can't, that'll just go to you too.
It'll just, okay.
You could even say, this is for all board members, do not engage in discussion, and you could just use BCC to cover yourself even more.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from our trustees? Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you. Correspondence?
No correspondence.
Acting Superintendent's report?
Uh, before the, before the acting superintendent um gives his report and makes his comments, um, we're, we're going to move the harassment, intimidation, bullying report. Madam President, could we have a mover for that?
Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to accept the harassment, intimidation, and bullying findings as reported by the acting superintendent and are available at administrative offices for review.
Second. Call the roll?
Mr. Bartletti?
I'm sorry, discussion, do, should I have said discussion? I apologize, I said discussion, okay. Call the roll?
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Acting Superintendent report?
Well, I guess we're all a little surprised, uh, none more than me. Um, it's been, it's been quite a couple of days. Sunday morning I woke up and I found a book that was started a long time ago when I actually thought I was going to be a principal and maybe a superintendent someday. And that book had a lot of good stuff in it. And I had found out we had a few things going on. For those of you that know. And on Sunday morning, I handwrote quickly some ideas. And, you know, it was like five o'clock in the morning and by six o'clock in the morning, I said, what am I doing? I, 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 I gotta be out of my mind. Um, but then I, I thought about us, teachers, custodians of bus drivers. And let me tell you, it hasn't been easy. You know, I, I, one thing I'm going to do is I'm not going to change where I am. You don't like me, that's okay. Uh, I, I, I sometimes don't like myself, to be honest with you. But um, it, today I think I like myself for doing this. And I'm actually shocking myself because I still can't believe I'm doing this. So in many ways, I thank you for this opportunity. Um, I, I am a twelve-week acting superintendent. I believe it's a three-month thing. I signed something today, I think the date is June thirtieth. And we got a lot to do. May, may, maybe, maybe more than we think. So my process of doing that, as you know, the word's thorough and efficient, but I'm going to add one. Effective, effective, right? And every decision that I, or we come together with, it has to have success or we did something wrong. And it's okay, I've done a lot wrong. Uh, uh, I've done things right too. Um, you know, somebody asked me, how are you going to do all this? Um, I don't think anybody realizes what I really do. I do all this every day anyway. Um, so I might as well do it. But what's my first thing? I, I, I have a list of every single person that works here, every position they hold, and starting mon- and starting Monday, I'm going to try to meet every single person. That's my first thing. My second thing is I'm going to sit down with the principals. And I'm going to want everyone here to know this. They are the bosses of their buildings. They are the first people you go to. And give them a shot. I listened to them all talk today, I think there's really good hearts in those people. So how do you do this? Well, I have a day job that includes everything I always do. And then I have another job, this one. So if I do my day job first, this would go second. If I do this first, my day job would go second. I have people in place to help me because they want to. I can't believe I'm saying that. They want to help me. Anything you need, I've heard that numerous times. Will this be easy? No. No, it's not. What are my goals? I'm going to tell you what they are. I want to find out what our needs are and try to meet them. I want to provide leadership, which is not easy. But I really want to build a lasting relationship here between all of us so that when my sand runs out of that hourglass, because it will, you never forget the time I spent sitting in this seat. And hopefully, we get things right so that when someone else comes after me, it's set in stone that we're going to be okay. So I'm going to leave you guys on one note. When I was a boy, I was in seventh grade, a friend of mine and I, our fathers helped us, we went on a little canoe trip. And, yeah, I know, I did, I was in the seventh grade. And we had everything, fishing rods, we had everything. We didn't put our life preserves on, we sat on them. We had lunch, and after the second set of rapids, we went down, tipped. I held on to the canoe and one paddle, and my friend, once we both, you know, bobbed back up out of the water, we managed to pull the canoe and everything to the side of the river. We were boys. Our fathers, you know, taught us how to be tough. We were tough kids. SEA Caucus does have tough kids, that has not changed, will not change. And then we emptied the water, got back in the canoe, and finished our trip. Well, I feel like I'm holding that canoe again. And I can assure you, I will get us to the side, take a deep breath, we'll empty it out, and we'll get back in it, and we will follow that river where we need to go. And then someone else is going to do a far better job than I am. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Charlie. Well said. Business Administrator Board Secretary Report?
No report.
Public Forum? Governance Personnel?
Under governance, we discuss appointments for professional development for April, postings for summer enrichment positions through the ARP grant and other summer positions, and fall and winter coaching positions. I make a motion to accept the recommendation of the acting superintendent to approve and adopt resolutions R 1.02 through R 1.11 and motion M 1.01 as described below for the following.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll?
Mr. Bartletti?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Policy?
I'd like to make a motion to table R 2.01.
Second.
Grace, can you just have it say postpone, not table? It's postpone, not table, right? Yeah, because table means no decisive date, and we're going to just postpone it until next month.
The motion, the motion to postpone, are you agreeable to that?
Yes.
You can postpone it. Are you agreeable to that revision?
Explain the difference again, I'm sorry.
The difference between postponing and tabling is, once you table it, there's no present intention to bring it back.
Okay.
As opposed to postponing so that you can do some due diligence before it comes back on the agenda.
So I'd like to make a motion to table R 2.01, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to postpone R 2.01, sorry.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll?
Mr. Bartletti?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Education Curriculum?
Okay, this month, we reviewed and approved field trips with the committee. Summer ELA Academy will run from June 24th to July 18th. It will be ninety minutes, live, it will be a ninety-minute live session daily with independent work. Summer Math Academy and middle school sessions running, I'm sorry, Summer Math Academy with middle school sessions running June 24th to July 1st from nine AM to twelve PM, and high school sessions running June 24th to July 23rd from nine AM to noon. We discussed extended school year to run at Claritin this summer. Summer enrichment programs and more information regarding summer enrichment will be coming shortly. Researching and discussing the use of pocket translators for school staff. We discussed pre-K, the district will use a first-come, first-served approach. The entire program will be full day and locations will be shared in the future. We discussed the possibility of ESL or ELLML enrichment classes for additional support for students. And the Education Committee met with Felicia Lot and Dylan Caruso, who presented information regarding various math curricula and ways to ensure consistency across grade levels. Oh, I make a motion to accept the recommendation of the acting superintendent to approve and adopt resolution R 3.01 as described below for the following.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll?
Mr. Bartletti?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre? Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Grace? Item number four under Education, Special Services, I'm not sure what that is. No, oh, that was...
No, no, no report.
No report, okay. Finance, Operations Finance?
During the April Building and Grounds and Finance Committee meetings, the committees discussed the following. So under Building and Grounds, we briefly discussed planning for the upcoming summer capital projects and what would be, what would we be doing tentatively based on what we can get materials for due to a nationwide shortage in materials? The long and waited and anticipated Claritin School Generator has been completed, installed, tested, and is now fully functional. So we will never have to speak about that generator again for a while. Lastly, we discussed pricing for the PAC Center, which will have a revision by May for review and post, and any new items for pricing will be effective July 1st. For Finance, Grace informed the committee that the county has approved our budget, and on May 1st, we will have our public hearing presentation for board approval. Once the board approves the budget, it'll go to the state for state approval. We spoke about issuing competitive bid for the district's paraprofessionals and entering into a cooperative pricing system participation agreement with NJ Edge to perform a cybersecurity assessment for our district. This is incredibly important at this time where cyber attacks and ransom attacks are becoming the norm. I make a motion to accept the recommendations of the Business Administrator Board Secretary to approve and adopt resolution R 5.01 to 5.10 as described in the following.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll?
Mr. Bartletti?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes to everything, but I recuse myself from R 5.01.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes to everything, but I recuse myself from R 5.01.
Dr. Farinola?
On resolution R 5.01, approval of the check register, I recuse myself on payment to Reed Academy and vote yes to all other resolutions.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm only going to list the committees that have reports for this month in the past. I just wanted to let the public know, in the past, we have gone through each item individually, but we since changed over to acknowledging that there is no report for each one, so I will not, moving forward tonight and in the future, be reading them. If there is no report listed, it means that we did not meet this month for a report. So Shared Services?
We had a, we had a meeting with the mayor and town council. Much about, much of it was about the pre-K building, as Abby stated in her education update, advising the town hall on registration and buildings and stuff to that matter. We do have another meeting next week, and more details will be coming out about registration after that meeting. I'm just going to jump into athletics real quick.
Yep, thank you.
So the athletic meeting, we had, we got an update with, on hockey. We will be, that was confirmed. We are moving to a new hockey co-op, or tri-op, I guess you could say, with Hoboken and Weehawken. That'll start next season. We got a spring sports update, all sports are in full swing, football, baseball, track and field. I do ask that everybody go out and support your high school teams. We got an update on the facilities, tennis courts need to be reviewed, the press box needs to be updated, scoreboard, as soon as the weather breaks, it will supposedly be up and started to put that project. And then we had a meeting with the Recreation Department to discuss fields and summer camp, so that was it for me.
Thank you. Public Forum?
Good evening, this meeting is open to the public for the purpose of addressing any subject matter that is pertinent to and are directly related to the operation of SEA Caucus Public School District, residents wishing to speak. On such items must sign the register provided for this purpose and are required to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. The board may or may not respond to issues raised by members of the public at the time they are raised, but will provide a response if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous, mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Please note that the board will not respond to comments regarding students or board employees in light of the privacy rights held by those individuals. Moreover, the board discourages comments about such individuals, will not be responsible for those comments. Members of the public who choose to speak during this public session should carefully consider their comments since they could be held personally liable for any statements they make. Finally, please note that in accordance with District Policy Number 1100, the board will not officially comment or respond to any matter mentioned unless it can confirm that the matter has first been brought to the attention of the appropriate school personnel in an attempt to resolve the issue informally. Your cooperation is appreciated.
Thank you, Stephen. Ron Maraz?
Thank you. Ron Maraz, SEA Caucus resident, SEA Caucus taxpayer, graduated from here, and my kids have graduated from here. I'm not here to say, I told you so. But there are some things that still bother me about this whole situation with the superintendent debacle. It's been a debacle for twelve years. Whether you've been here a hot minute or you've been here a long time, I don't have any confidence in this board in terms of hiring a full-time, an adequate full-time superintendent. The last group voted unanimously for someone who didn't even last a year. That could have been on his doings, you guys appointed him. Didn't have the experience, you hired him unanimously. You guys set us back every time this happens. Leaving the district with no leadership, motivation, or direction, again and again. Whatever you keep doing, I hope you come up with a better plan. If you use it in the same agency and expecting different results, that's not working. If you get any advice from someone, it's not working. When should the board be held responsible for their actions? Do we have to wait until your terms are up to be voted out? Are you guys even embarrassed at all of what had happened? I think the town's embarrassed. Do you think you should apologize at all? I would think you teach your kids, when you mess up, you apologize. Why did it have to take long to hear about this to the staff, to the town? We had to wait for the mayor to make a response first. I hope going forward, when you're looking at a permanent superintendent, you find someone with actual experience who has the ability to lead. Maybe you could do a Google search? I mean, that's what most people do, you'd find a lot just by doing that. Maybe, and I don't know if this is a possibility, have a committee of teachers. Teachers know a lot of people in different districts. Maybe they've heard something, I don't know if that's a possibility with confidentiality, but the thought. Memes with the salaries seemed like a huge jump the last time. Definitely was not commensurate with experience, something to consider. No long-term contracts. Maybe they should have to prove themselves before we give them a higher salary. I know where this has bit us in the butt in the past, but they usually bring in employees from their districts, their buddies, and it doesn't work out for us. Maybe we should put a limit and say, hey, after you're here a year, then you could hire who you want. I just hope that something is learned from this, and we could benefit from it. I truly thank Mr. Voigies for taking on this role, agreeing to taking on this role. It's not going to be easy, he knows it, but we're supportive. Thank you for your time.
Board Member Comments?
Welcome, Charlie.
Yes, I agree. Welcome, Charlie, and thank you.
You know, I make a deal with everyone. Let's all thank each other in twelve weeks. I look forward to these graduations. I look forward to trying to make everybody feel really good again. And we're going to, it'll take some time. And we're gonna, gonna take some time. And listen, you know how they say your door is always open? I don't have a door. It's the truth, so I'll see you around.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.